Good evening. The regular meeting of the Saint Joseph County Council, January 12th, 2021 is now called to order. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Hess?
You're muted, Diana.
I would like to make nominations for the following appointments to the Area Board of Zoning Appeals, Christine Deutscher and Donnie Reitzman. And as alternative members of the Area Board of Zoning Appeals, I want to nominate Zach Driggs and DJ Tavernier. Do you want to vote on that first or do all of the?
You can do, you can do the reappointment too.
Okay, and for the reappointment, I'd like to nominate Corey Nolan for the Data Board/IT Governance Committee.
Thank you very much. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none. Nominations are closed. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Christine Deutscher and Donnie Reitzman are appointed to the Area Board of Zoning Appeals and as alternates, Zach Driggs and DJ Tavernier. And Corey Nolan is reappointed to the Data Board/IT Governance Board. Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the December 1st, 2020 and the December 22nd, 2020 meetings?
They're moved.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the December 1st meeting and the December 22nd, 2020 meeting are approved. Next, we have first readings. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 1-21?
Bill 121, an unincorporated portion of Sancho County Public Way or Public Place located at the first north-south alley west of Main Street, bound by Beckley Street to the north, State Road 23 to the south, Lot A of Kreider's replat of lots 3 and 4 of Beckley Park and Lot 5 of Beckley Park to the west and lots 19 to 23, as shown on the original platte of the town of Granger to the east, Harris Township, Sancho County, Indiana, Section 7, T38N, R4E, petitioner 12555, State Road 23, LLC, 51730, Villager Parkway, Granger, Indiana, 46530.
Bill Number 1-21 is assigned to the land, is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee? Clerk, will you please read the next bill, which is requested add-on from the petitioner?
Yep. In ordinance to the Sancho County Council amending Title 15, Chapter 154, Land Usage of the Sancho County Code by amending Section 1 by 4 dot 478 to amend controlled uses and adult uses. By revising the list of uses, an adult business is not permitted to be located within 500 feet of, petitioner, area plan, commission.
Since this is an add-on, Mr. Hammond, could you please take the roll? We have to have 100% agreement to actually have this added on.
Sure. Alright, so let's see, I want to jot this down here. Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tloyan? Is Mark there? Do we know? I'm going to jump to Mr. Catan's right.
Yes, to suspend the rules for first reading.
Okay, Joe Canorecki?
Joe is, Joe is trying to get into this, I was just informed that Joe is trying to get into the Zoom meeting and Mark Tloyan, so we can't move forward without unanimous vote?
No, 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 I agree with you.
Oh. We, oh, we can move forward with the ones that are present? Okay. Mr. Triple, would you confirm that? We can move forward with whoever's here as long as it's unanimous, whoever's on the meeting?
We need unanimous support of those that are participating and present at the meeting only.
Okay, alright, so, okay, so.
And I'll cir, I'll circle back on those guys, but, so last I heard was from Mark Catan's right, Joe is not in, in the meeting yet. Mark Root?
Yes.
Now I'm going to jump back up to Mark Tloyan.
Mark, Mr. Hammond, Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, yeah.
Mark is, Mark is trying to, to get on, but evidently he may not know that new number.
Wrong texting number. That'd be great. And then Joe Canorecki, did you, is he successfully on yet?
He's still trying to get on, I believe.
Alright, well then we're going to go.
I'm sorry, you said that Joe C. and, and I are on Zoom, but they must be on the wrong Zoom number.
Alright, here I am.
That was Joe.
And, and Mark Tloyan, we, we had a, we must have had the old agenda pulled up.
Okay.
Yeah, you must have had the old one.
Joe, we're voting on Bill 421 to, for, to have the discussion in public hearing tonight to suspend the rules so that we can. So, uh, where do you stand on that?
21 was?
4, 4, 421, it looks like it's to amend the controlled uses, controlled uses and adult uses by revising the list of uses of adult, an adult business is not permitted to be located within 500 feet of.
Mr. Hammond?
So asking to suspend the rule, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, no, this is, this is just the first reading only, but before we can move forward, we have to make sure that we have unanimous, and I do believe we do.
Yeah, I, I just, Joe, I just trying to get, find out where Joe Canorecki was on this. Joe, you have? Yes or no, bud?
I, I, I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Tloyan, are you on now? Alright, Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, thank you. So could you please read Bill Number 4, 421? We need to read it and I'll assign it. Just trying to make sure we're doing it right.
Of course. In ordinance to the Sancho County Council amending Title 15, Chapter 154, Land Usage of the Sancho County Code by amending Section 154 point 478 to amend controlled uses and adult uses by revising the list of uses and adult business is not permitted to be located within 500 feet of, petitioner, area plan, commission.
Thank you. Bill Number 4-21 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Uh, would you please take the roll, Mr. Hammond, on 521 to make sure that we have unanimous?
Do, would you like carefully to read it first?
Take, take the vote first to see if we have unanimous.
521 to hear it. Uh, yeah, okay, Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tloyan?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Catan's right?
Yes.
Mr. Canorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
And motion carries nine zero.
Okay.
And now I'll, I'll read it for you.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Yeah. Uh-huh. An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code is amended for property located at 12555 Adams Road from C Commercial District to B District, petitioner 12555, State Road 23, LLC.
Thank you. Bill Number 5-21 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Clerk, will you please take the roll and see if we have unanimous on the next bill?
Uh, Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tloyan? Out, Mr. Tloyan? I'll, I'll come back.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Catan's right?
Yes.
Mr. Canorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Uh, that carries nine zero. You want me to read it now?
Yes, please.
621, in ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the Saint Joseph, Saint Joseph County Code is amended for property located at 10386 McKinley Highway from C Commercial District, Site Plan Specific, to C Commercial District, not Site Plan Specific, petitioner, Wood Rental Properties LLC.
Thank you. Bill Number 6-21 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes, that concludes first readings for this evening. Next, we have Resolution Bill Number 124-20. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
12420, a resolution of the Sancho County Council adopting a cash reserves policy, petitioner, Sancho County Auditor.
Petitioner?
Hello, this is John Murphy from, um, Murphy, the auditor. This House Committee has a, not binding, but it's about practice to set cash reserve level three conversion funds. After we're done with those cash reserve ordinance, we want to place a tracking, uh, report where we'll compare our actual cash reserves to the, uh, bench, our targets every month, and we'll provide that to you on a monthly basis. If you have any questions, any questions that you have.
Any questions from council? For Mr. Murphy? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 124-20. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on 12420. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Do I hear a second? A motion, a motion to pass Bill Number 124-20 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Catan's right?
Yes.
Mr. Canorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
And motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 124-20 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 126-20?
In ordinance to the Sancho County Council amending the 2021 salary ordinance for appointing officers and employees for all departments of the county, correcting the salary for the elected coroner to comply with statutory requirements. Petitioner, Sancho County Coroner.
Petitioner?
Uh, this is Peter Augustino. I am speaking on behalf of the Saint Joseph County Coroner, Patricia Jordan, MD who's also on the line. Uh, state law sets the, uh, salary for a medical doctor who serves as a coroner at one and a half times the salary that was set for the, uh, non-medical coroner, and so that's stat.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council from Mr. Augustino? Hearing none, I'll open, open the public hearing on Bill Number 126-20. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of 12620? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. May I have a motion on Bill Number 12620?
Move for approval.
Second.
Who, who made the first motion? I'm sorry.
Canorecki.
Okay, thank you. And the motion to pass Bill Number 121, Bill Number 12620 was made by Councilman Canorecki, and the second was by?
Catan's right.
Second was by Councilman Catan's right. Any further comments from any council member on 12620? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tloyan?
Yes.
Mr. C, uh, Catan's right?
Yes, Catan's right, yes.
Sure. Mr. Canorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the, let the record show that Bill Number 126-20 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we, the next three bills, actually, um, we have to go through the same process. We need a, we need to vote first to make sure we have, um, a unanimous vote to actually vote on the bill. So, Mr. Hammond, would you please take the roll to make sure we have a unanimous to vote on Bill Number, unanimous, yes, to vote on Bill Number 221?
Yep. Mr. Catan's right?
Yes.
Mr. Canorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tloyan?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Was nine zero.
So we have, we have a nine to zero unanimous vote to actually, um, have a public hearing on, on this, on 221. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 221?
Yep. In ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Sancho County for the year 2021, petitioner, Health Department.
Petitioner?
Good afternoon, evening. This is Amy Rupee, Administrator for the Saint Joseph County Department of Health with offices on the 8th and 9th floor of the county city building. Before you is a request to hire temporary seasonal help needed for our COVID vaccine clinics. We would like to employ four vaccinators and four registrars for 40 hours a week each week until June 30th of 2021. Originally, we had planned to hire them as contractual employees, however, after having discussions with Jamie Woods and Kim in Human Resources, um, we had found out that they would not be covered by the county's liability, and we would like to offer them coverage, therefore, we are asking for them to be hired as temporary seasonal help for the department.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Mr. Morton, Mr. Root here?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Rupee, I do have one question that actually concerns the bill coming up next. Can you tell me, is there any funding for the inspectors of the public health order in the upcoming Bill 3-21? Thank you.
There, um, no. Speaking on Bill 3-21, any remuneration or overtime for the inspections related to our public health order has been removed. It is directly for overtime for staff at our COVID vaccine clinics.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, uh, Mr. Canorecki here. Regarding this current bill, the, uh, uh, this, there, there's a hope that this will be, get covered by, by CARES money, or what's that look like?
Um, from my understanding, this is going to be part of the CARES Act money that is a carryforward from last year. I believe there's a three or so million dollar balance that John Murphy mentioned that we could pull from, and I believe John's on the line, so he could verify that.
Yeah, this is my camera, that's true.
Do that before, so.
Yeah, that's true. That's, I talked to John earlier, that's the plan.
Thank you.
Amy's right, yep.
Any other questions from council on Bill Number 2-21?
I had a question, Mr. Morton, Mark Tloyan. You mentioned the word liability. Could you explain on that a little bit?
Um, for our vaccinators, um, they're in, um, a tough situation if for some reason a patient were to file suit against our vaccinator, they would not be covered under the county's liability if they are independent contract, independent contractors or contractual employees. Them being a county employee covers them under the liability carried by Saint Joseph County.
And if somebody had an adverse reaction to the vaccination, the county may be on the hook?
Uh, I don't believe so much the adverse reaction to it. Um, could be a needle stick, could be a variety of situations that someone may file claim against a vaccinator. We wanted to protect them, so we would able, be able to have staff come on hand for that. If we didn't offer any liability insurance, I don't know that we would have any volunteers or temporary seasonal workers willing to help us out with the overwhelming demand.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 2-21. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill Number 2-21. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second. Second.
A motion to pass Bill Number 2-21 was made by Councilwoman Hess and seconded by Councilwoman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on 2-21? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Canorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan? Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Catan's right?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Uh, carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 2-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please take the roll to make sure we have unanimous vote to, uh, hear Bill Number 3-21?
Yes. Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Catan's right?
Yes.
Mr. Canorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Uh, carries nine zero.
Thank you. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 3-21 since we have a unanimous vote on that?
In ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Sancho County for the year 2021, petitioner, Health Department.
Petitioner?
Yes, this ordinance is requesting overtime pay for our Department of Health staff to help work the COVID clinics along with the temporary full-time staff. We are asking for, out of the earmarked funds that were earmarked for the Department of Health for COVID testing, we would like to shift that priority to COVID vaccination, and we're asking for an appropriation of $300,000 from the CARES Act fund balance of $3 million.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the?
Yeah, is this, is this overtime over 40 hours, or how do you do it? I assume these are hourly people.
Uh, these are our salaried, uh, non-exempt employees with the department. We used an estimate of needing, um, 160 hours a week of a vaccinator and 160 hours a week of a registrar for the 25 weeks taking us to the end of June.
Well, so their salary, but you pay them overtime besides their salary, is that what you're saying?
That's what we would like to do.
Is that the way you usually handle people that are on salary?
Um, if they're not.
Aren't some of your salaried people just salaried?
For our exempt employees, yes. Those are not included in this ordinance. This pertains to the non-exempt employees that are able to, usually, we have them earn comp time, which is time and a half. In this instance, we would like to pay them time and a half instead of having them earn the comp time.
Okay, and is it for hours over 40, or is it for over hours eight per day?
No, actually, we work on a 37 and a half hour work week at the Department of Health. Anything between 37 and a half and 40 hours would be straight time paid out, and then anything over 40 hours in the week would be paid overtime.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I'd, I'd have one, um, with, with, with the whole CARES Act language, having been speaking to employees that weren't budgeted before, are we pretty sure that these people, even though these funds weren't budgeted, but the positions were? Are, are, are we good on that? It seemed all kind of murky.
Joe, this is Steve. I, I hope you can all hear me. Um, this isn't going to be a problem because the CARES Act is actually closed. We're fully reimbursed, and so these dollars are dollars that were carried over from reimbursements last year that happened to come from the CARES Act, but they're no longer considered CARES Act dollars.
Thank you. That really clears that up. Thanks a lot.
Any other questions from council? On 3-21? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of Bill Number 3-21? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of Bill 3-21? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on the bill. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Oh.
Second.
Thank you. A motion to pass Bill Number 3-21 was made by Councilwoman Hess and was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Catan's right?
Yes.
Mr. Canorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 3-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, under public hearing, public comment on fiscal matters, we have Bill Number 721. Clerk, will you please take the roll to make sure that we have a unanimous vote to, to move forward?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Catan's right?
Yes.
Mr. Canorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries nine zero.
Thank you very much. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 7-21?
In ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purposes herein specified for the several departments herein listed of Sancho County Government.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Yes, actually, I wanted to make an amendment on item A. It looks like there's a mathematical error. The total is two hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars coming from COVID expenditures, and then the amounts for temp seasonal help is correct and FICA taxes is correct. This is the transfer to supplement Bill number twenty, or excuse me, two dash twenty-one, transferring the money from the COVID expenditures account within the general fund to the temp seasonal help and the FICA taxes to be paid on that salary.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner?
It sounds like you need an amendment for the arithmetic error from one of your council people.
Yeah. So is the corrected total, maybe our finance guy can jump in, four eighty-five, four twenty-six, would that be right?
The corrected total, I believe, Councilman Kennerackey is two hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars. It was, it was off by one thousand dollars. Is that correct, Amy?
That is correct.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, it's taking it from COVID expenditures and then putting it into temp seasonal and FICA taxes.
Well, then I move to amend this, uh, section A, seven twenty-one, to two forty-two, two thirteen.
Second.
We have a, we have an amendment and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Bill number seven twenty-one is amended. I will open the public hearing on seven twenty-one as amended. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone, anyone wish to speak in opposition of Bill seven dash twenty-one? Hearing none, do I hear a motion on seven twenty-one as amended?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Do I hear him?
Motion to pass Bill number seven dash twenty-one as amended was made by Councilwoman Hess, and it was seconded by Councilman Kennerackey. Any further comments from council on seven twenty-one as amended? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Uh, Mr. File?
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tulloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kennerackey?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number seven dash twenty-one was passed, was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Seven twenty-one as amended was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have the land use planning um, bills. Clerk, will you please read Bill number forty-nine dash twenty?
Forty-nine twenty, in ordinance amending and supplementing title fifteen land uses, chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code is amended for property located at vacant land in the southwest quadrant of Larison Boulevard and Edison Road from A Agricultural District to I Industrial District. Petitioner Kimberly Phillips and Valerie Waters.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number forty-nine dash twenty comes to the fore. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Area Plan?
Good evening, this is Ryan Fellows with the Area Plan Commission with offices on the eleventh floor of the County City Building. I'm gonna ask if it's possible for me to share my screen. I can present the presentation which was in your packet, and for anyone listening from home, uh, the packet that's online and the, on the website does have active agenda and supporting documents at the end of that packet has the same information. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Great. There we go. Okay, as you see on the screen, the property that's cross-hatched is at the corner of Larison and Edison Road in the southwest quadrant. It is currently being used for farming. Just to the north is I N Tech and I N Coat. And switching over to see the zoning of the land around it is currently zoned agricultural with the property around it on three sides being also agricultural, but with the property to the north being zoned general industrial as part of the town of New Carlisle. The red dashed lines represents the sanitary sewer lines that are available in the area, and the municipal water plant is also, uh, situated on the northwest part of the screen, so those utilities are available. Um, as this is a picture of the property taken from along Larison Boulevard with I N Tech, I N Coat on the right-hand side and on the horizon there, um, farmland as you can see. And, uh, what you can't necessarily see is there are twenty-foot wide, uh, natural gas main easement that's owned by Nipco that cuts through the middle of the property. Uh, this screen has it rotated to the north, this on the right side. Switching over to the comprehensive plan, um, this, uh, the comprehensive plan shows, um, goals and objectives that are a little bit at odds with each other. On one hand, you have goal one, to alleviate and minimize the loss of agricultural land, including objective A, minimize the amount of new development in areas with high agricultural importance. And you can see on the screen that this area is included, um, is part of the Rensselaer Guilford Miami Soil Association, which is part of the high-yield crop lands. And then switching over to goal two, which is kind of the other side of the equation, is to encourage the economic development of the county and its municipalities, including objective A, ensure that suitable areas are available for future industrial development. And in performance with policy A, uh, establishment of, uh, industrial areas that meet the needs of, for not just up to twenty twenty, but now that we're past twenty twenty, to the industrial reserve set aside for beyond that. This area is in ninety-one percent of the future land use map as being, uh, set aside for future, uh, industrial development and nine percent for the future reserve, which again, the reserve is for the time period following twenty twenty, which is the period we're in now. And then moving on to, um, policy two, uh, which talks about the amount of area which can be used for heavy industrial uses. Um, we've kind of gone through this in great detail in, in the committee level. Um, I'm happy to go through it with anyone who wants to, to go through it again, uh, but so far, all of the new industrial areas zoned in this area, um, were all approved with the, uh, ring commitments that they not include any heavy industrial usage, uh, so therefore, we are not in, in danger of exceeding that limit. And again, that limit was set to, up to the year twenty twenty, and we're past that, um, that limit now. And moving on to the five criteria found in state law, these are criteria that the legislative body you need to spend a reasonable regard to, um, that includes the comprehensive plan, which we just reviewed, the current conditions and character, which in this area, there is industrial around it and along the north side of its border, most desirable use, the conservation of property values, responsible development and growth. And this comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Any question? Thank you very much. Any questions from council for Area Plan? Hearing none, petitioner?
Yes. Good evening. Name is Aaron Blank with Lawson Fisher Associates, with offices at five twenty-five, uh, West Washington in South Bend, uh, representing the petitioners on this item for land use this evening. Uh, so what we're here to discuss, it's the rezoning of a property to use that has been acknowledged since its inception and that every iteration of the comprehensive plan hasn't allowable a preferred use. Uh, I'll start with some information about the overall area, followed by particulars of this property, and, uh, and then close with any questions might have. So, starting with the overall, uh, topic, uh, the St. Joseph County through its redevelopment commission has been working with the town of New Carlisle and all the township officials to create a development agreement that iterates a core development area, restricts certain uses, and establishes development guidelines within what's been identified as that, uh, core development area, of which this property is included. Others could speak on the particulars of, of that, agree with a nine, but the vision for this core development area is to have a large, big use development site being roughly seven hundred and thirty acres, uh, that was zoned previously south of here between Larison and Willow down to State Road two. Uh, the vision is for that large, single-use development to be accompanied by some smaller developments of the eighty to a hundred acre size that are envisioned to be either directly supporting or tertiary to the larger single-use development. In the past, if there's already enough industrial zone land, then zoning should be limited until that property is developed. I'll remind council members, as stated in the Area Plan Staff recommendation, that we haven't reached the industrial development goal of the comp plan. And, uh, with respect to the, the goal one, um, and, and the assumption that this may be, this rezoning may be at odds with goal one, I could argue the concept of the IEC core development area is in keeping with goal one, and having a conglomeration of industrial uses in a defined area with defined use and defined development standards, using the same roadways, utility infrastructure, and potential workforce pool goes a long way to alleviate and in fact minimize the loss of agricultural land. Alleviate does not mean prevent. Prevent is an absolute concept that is counter to the point of having a comprehensive plan. Alleviate actually means to temper, control, diminish, or curb, uh, which is exactly what the IEC core development plan is intended to do. And that's why it is supported by the signatory stakeholders. This rezoning petition and others like it are, are not ill-conceived or mean-jerk reactions to a market. Their execution of a carefully care after document that lays out the vision of the economic development potential of St. Joseph County, and it may seem sudden to some, given the recent emphasis on rezoning here in this area, this area has been designated as prime industrial development for decades. And rezoning this property to industrial is another step in furthering the vision of St. Joseph County to lead the region in economic development that ultimately benefits the residents of St. Joseph County at large. The petitioner is, in this case, is keenly aware of the transformation in this area to the longstanding industrial nature of the neighborhood due to the fact their family has owned and farmed property in this area for five generations. Their father, in fact, sold a portion of this particular property to facilitate construction of Larison Road, uh, leading up to the I N Tech plant. As they are aware of the industrial nature around them, um, they're struggling at odds a bit to find a proper way to market their property, um, being that it's, they're wanting to, to sell the property and, and they're no longer farmers. They have tenant farmers on the property currently. Um, so earlier this year, only redevelopment approached Kimberly and Valerie about right-of-way acquisition along Edison Road and the possibility of a, an additional utility easement that would be part of a corridor enhancement or connectivity plan that the county commissioners, county engineer, and county redevelopment provision for Larison and Edison Roads. And during that discussion with the property owners, uh, they made a request for the county redevelopment system to rezone. So that's why we're here. The county identified that Phillips Waters Parcel is a viable location for industrial development based upon the comp plan and agreed to assist with the rezone. Uh, so it should be noted that Kimberly and Valerie are not under a contract to sell, nor do they have a current purchase option to exercise. Um, the simple fact remains that the market interest in this property is as an industrial development site, so. In addition, the property is currently being farmed, as I mentioned, by a tenant farmer, and Valerie and Kimberly intend to keep the land in production until such times as it's transferred to another owner. They don't have any reason to change that. So you have before you a property with a favorable recommendation from Area Plan Staff that is requested, it is in alignment with the comprehensive plan. Industrial use has been identified as most desirable use based on location, existing roadway corridors, and utility infrastructure. And lastly, an acknowledgement of the fact that there's no site plan associated with the rezone petition, which has urged some to call the speculative rezoning. I'll agree that there's some speculation in the end use of the property once it's rezoned, but it's, what is not speculative is the input decisions that have yet to be made and approved by the St. Joseph County officials through the site plan process that were required for the eventual development of this property, i.e. tying back to that core development area guideline. So I'll end with this. Kimberly and Valerie requesting a reason, a response to the property market in this area of the county that's been designated for industrial development for the past twenty years. It's completely congruent with comp plan and the vision of IEC core development area. So the petitioner's respectful request, county council to approve this rezone petition for industrial zone.
Thank you very much.
Taking the question.
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill number forty-nine twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Jeff Ray, President and CEO, South Bend Regional Chamber Commerce with offices at one oh one North Michigan in South Bend. I'm here this evening to speak, uh, in favor of this. Uh, similar to the conversation we had several months, uh, back, we are encouraged by the activity that the county is taking to encourage new development opportunities um, in, in this area. Uh, we're, uh, feel good about the restrictions they've put on the types of uses. We know this parcel in particular has been one of the more desirable parcels from early on, and this action, um, obviously, uh, potentially accelerates that. Um, when people are asking about, um, economic development opportunities, zoning is also often a, uh, important consideration. Um, I think developers are nervous that, uh, that they invest a lot of time and effort and energy in a property and don't get the zoning. It, it's sort of, uh, it affects their timing and such. So I, I would encourage, uh, based on the investment that the county's made over the years in the infrastructure to this site and the careful planning that's undergoing out there, that, uh, I would just ask that you approve of this petition this evening.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of Bill number forty-nine twenty?
This is Peter Agostino, uh, attorney-at-law with offices at one thirty-one South Taylor Street in South Bend. Uh, I'm speaking in favor of this and also pointing out that I'll be speaking on the, uh, next bill, uh, which is, uh, next door, so to speak, to this property, uh, under, uh, Bill number one oh six twenty, which I believe did receive a favorable recommendation from the committee. Um, and I think one of the, uh, couple additional factors I'd like to add in support of this, as well as Bill one oh six twenty coming up, is that, uh, there is interest, in fact, there has been discussions that we did bring to the attention of the committee on one oh six twenty that relates to this parcel as well, uh, regarding interest in this particular area of, uh, manufacturing facility that could employ between four hundred and five hundred and fifty workers. I know Economic Development is continuing to work on that prospect, uh, and, uh, uh, in addition uh, to that, uh, real prospect, if you look at, visually, and I present later, uh, that you can see that, uh, those parcels, the ones both that are under forty-nine twenty and one oh six twenty coming up, are surrounded, in fact, by industrial property. Uh, so this is consistent with the core plan, consistent with the comprehensive plan, uh, consistent with current conditions around that area. It is by far the most desirable use and, uh, conserves values in the area, and it is part of responsible growth. So I think it meets all criteria for approval, and I, uh, would urge the council to approve forty-nine twenty. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of Bill number forty-nine twenty?
Mr. Mr. President, Bill Shalio with Economic Development. Uh, just two additional pieces to add to this. Uh, as you look at the map of this parcel and, and the parcel that's part of the next petition, uh, myself and Chris Brown with Economic Development met with the property owners that own the L sheet parcel that, that sits adjacent to these parcels. Uh, as the maps flip, it would be, uh, the, the parcel identified here is the Ward Living Trust property. property. We met with them last Thursday. They too have an interest. They understand the value of being part of the larger development process out in this area. So depending on how the actions go today and this, they too would look to file a rezoning petition. They also have the piece of property just south of the Sebastian property between the truck terminal and Early Road. I would also note that just to the west of the Ward property or just to the west of these properties where Tejas Tubular is, that property sold at the end of last month. We will have a new owner of that site, or we do have a new owner of that property. We've had a basic introduction to them on a phone call, but we anticipate a new project coming to that site, relocating from another part of the state of Indiana to this building, bringing jobs and new investment to the building. So I would say that this, this area really has a lot of development interest. And again, to follow up on Mr. Agostino's comments, we do have a prospect that we have filed a proposal to. We have contacted the prospect. They're still in the process of doing due diligence on this site and some other sites. So, but certainly rezoning will be a big key in that process as they consider these sites in this area. So thank you very much for your consideration of these rezonings.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of bill number 4920? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Shalio, just clarification, I look at the zoning map here, and I don't know if you have this memorizer, if you have it able to look at it, but I believe it's true that these properties that we're looking at tonight, one that you said that's kind of between them there, that's the Ward Living Trust, and then there's one directly to the south, you mentioned that. And then there's one that is directly west of the new St. Joe Energy Center. Those would be the only non-industrial spots left, except, with the exception of east of Larison, correct? In the core development.
Oh, wait, yeah, I think, so the only, actually, the only two properties that would still be unzoned is industrial in this case, are the two properties that are just east of Walnut Road. There's two properties that are identified there. We have, we've reached out to the property owners as it relates to some right-of-way that we need on Early Road, but have not had a conversation with them about rezoning at this point in time. Just again, just trying to understand what the rezoning process would be. These petitions have been filed for quite a, quite a time as they've been working through the process, but depending on how this conversation goes, we will be reaching out to them. Again, there is no push to rezon if the Robleski family who owns those properties wants to continue to rezon those properties, or to have those properties stay as ag zoning, you know, that will, that will be fine, that still works in the area. But you're right, everything else west of Larison, south of Edison, would be zoned industrial at that point.
Mr. Shalio?
Yes, sir.
Bill, what about the, I'm looking at a different map, parcel number nine, John Kreitzer? Just, he's just west of Larison, just east of the Ward Living Trust, that lower Ward Living Trust. Is that parcel still available, or has that been bought already?
As the maps are rotating, yeah, no, I, you're right, I am incorrect. That is, there is a little sliver of land. It's actually a carryover from the property on the east side of the road, I believe, when Larison purchased that little, that little parcel was split apart as part of that. You're right, so that is the last little wedge.
Yeah, right, just to the, just to the east of the Ward Living Trust, that lower parcel number seven, I believe, I don't, just the map that you gave me maybe a month ago or a month and a half ago or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, I think the map on the screen has it identified as parcel 1210210252. Yeah, so that would be, those three, those three parcels would be the only three unzoned industrial properties west of Larison.
And in your discussion with the, with the Ward parcels, is there anything can to keep open conversation with them, or what's the, what's going forward, what's the?
Yeah, they were, they actually have requested us to do two things. One is to put together the materials needed for the acquisition of right-of-way from them at Early and Edison Road, as we look to extend Early Road on the south side of there, or on the properties there, and then also on Edison Road. So they've asked us to do that, and then related to that is an easement corridor, an east-west easement corridor through the properties for the potential of a railroad spur, a railroad lead track through that area. And then they've also asked us to put together a draft rezoning petition. Again, they wanted to see how the rezoning process went tonight before they, they went forward with having that filed.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of bill number 4920? Does anyone like to speak, does anyone wish to speak in opposition of bill 4920?
I would like to speak in opposition to the bill.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Christopher Cobb, 215 East Pokhagan Street, South Bend, Indiana. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council about this matter, and I hope all members of the council had a safe holiday season and are having a good beginning to their new year. The comments that have been made by the petitioner's representative and by those speaking in favor of the petition have, have put the issues before the council on the table. The extent to which this is speculative rezoning, the fact that the, the vision for this property is for development that is tertiary to a hypothetical large-scale development that might happen to the, on the large parcel rezoned to the south, and that it would ultimately bring benefits to the residents of St. Joseph County. Those benefits have never been clearly enumerated or demonstrated as coming. So we, we again are in the realm of speculation. Now, I will say that certainly there is a stronger rationale in, in respect to proximity to other industry, proximity utilities, fitting within the amount of industry proposed for the, in the comprehensive land use plan for rezoning this than for the 700 acre parcel. But now that that 700 acre parcel has been rezoned, that definitely brings the potential for economic, for industrial development in this area above the amount that's envisioned by the comprehensive land use plan. So where, where does the line get drawn? I think that, that it makes sense, given the vision for this, to wait until the other comes to pass. If this was going to be developed on its own, why not bring, why not bring this forward first and leave that other 700 acres be? At the very least, I think the council really should, if you approve this, put the same strictures ruling out heavy industrial uses that were placed on the 700 acres, because any development on this land will have the same proximate impacts on New Carlisle and on the rural neighborhoods around this area that heavy industrial development on the 700 acre parcel would. So I think that in the interest of keeping the development within this area within limits, that these properties should not be rezoned at this time. I think in the interest of not encouraging speculative rezoning, these parcels should not be rezoned at this time. And if those arguments don't carry weight, the council should be mindful of the interests of the area residents by making sure that disruptive heavy industry cannot come in on these parcels. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else else that would like to speak in opposition of bill 4920?
Jennifer Betts, I live at 2315 Roosevelt Road. I would agree with Mr., the comments Mr. Cobb made, so I will try to make my comments short. Again, we are still waiting for a response to the hundreds of pages of comments on the area management. There is talk of a new process for a comprehensive land use plan. Mr. Blank acknowledged the speculative nature of this. Mr. Ray has spoken publicly about the slowdown of the economy because of the coronavirus pandemic. Again, I just feel like we are putting the cart before the horse. There's no reason that this rezoning needs to happen before there's true transparent participatory community planning that unfolds, especially the people. I have been at these meetings now for many, many months, and I've actually never heard a community member come out in favor of heavy industry or industry moving into the area. The only people who speak in favor of that are ones who are state employees. I think we need to remember that the economic development's true definition is enhancing the prosperity and quality of life for all residents. I would like to say that I think that that has a biodiversity meeting. And again, I don't think there's any hurry to rezon this when it remains so speculative in nature and we don't actually know what's coming in. I really am grateful to all of you for listening to us over the past, honestly, several years now. Please hold county employees accountable and have them actually do their job of involving the public. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of bill 49-20? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on the bill. The petitioner now has three minutes to rebut any comments made in opposition to bill 4920.
I don't know that I have much to rebut, at risk of repeating myself. But I believe that it would be in keeping with what I understand the petitioner's to be and their stance on things. As I mentioned, being longtime property owners in the area and in favor of continuing to use the property in agricultural nature, that they are not interested in my personal phone conversations with them on this matter in having a heavy industrial use or something that is disruptive. They don't care to see that. But I'll say that they, they have not signed a list of enumerated uses that would be excluded. That was something that would, as the core development takes shape, those guidelines, and we move forward with those steps in the future.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing on 4920. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
I have another question, President.
Mr. Nolan?
Um, sorry, I didn't catch the name, but for the petitioner here, so did I catch that the restrictions that were attached to the last couple of properties, these exact same restrictions, would be amenable to the petitioner for this, these properties, or this property?
Mr. Nolan, is my understanding, yes.
Okay.
The document has not been signed as of today.
And, Mr. President, I would like to amend this bill to, I can, as Mr. Agostino is well aware, we know exactly what they are, and obviously traded them back and forth several times, but it reads exactly the same as the previous Sebastian rezonings. I don't have the numbers here in front of me, but we all saw about the mining operations and the metal scrap slaughterhouses, all the festivities, and then we added in the language about any comprehensive plan and heavy uses, high impacts on the surrounding properties and noise, vibrations, all that stuff. That exact same language. I'm proposing we add to this bill.
Do I hear a second on Mr. Nolan's amendment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, bill number 4920 is amended.
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Krasinski?
I have a question for Mr. Shalio. Is he still on?
Yes.
Bill, is it safe to say that the, that the potential company that is interested in the, in both sites, or the Sebastian site and this site, is basing their decision that utilities are available in that area compared to the 700 acres down along State Road 2 and east of Walnut? I believe all the utilities are up in this Edison-Larison area, am I correct?
Yeah, no, you are correct, that there are utilities here on these, in front of these parcels, both on Larison and on Edison. You know, the other opportunity here is that the properties are more, I guess, I'd say right-sized to the acreage that they need. They were looking for 40 acres, expandable up to 65 or 70 acres, and so this is, this is in keeping with, with that acreage size versus having to buy additional acreage that they would need. I would also say that the price point of this property is, is different than the, the large acreage, and, and so that may also be a consideration. When we'd looked at the acreage as far as the request, this seemed to be a good size and a good site for this project.
So basically, you could say this one here, these, these two sites that we're potentially going to vote on this evening, are basically are shovel-ready then?
They, yeah, absolutely are. And I, and I think Mr. Fellow's map, one of his maps pointed out one of the challenges, one of the development challenges. There is a Nipco gas line that runs through the site, runs north-south through the site. So that does present some development challenges, specifically developing this property. We did have a conversation with Nipco about what it would cost to relocate this line, and to move this high-pressure line would cost about $6 million. And you wouldn't be moving it just through this parcel, you'd be moving it well south of this parcel and then north, how it connects into Ion Tech and Co. So it really is one of these where it takes both of the properties together to make development occur in these areas.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? With that, I'll close the public hearing on bill 4920. May I have a motion on bill 4920 as amended?
For approval?
Do I hear a second?
As amended.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass bill number 4920 as amended was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Canorecki. Any further comments from council on 4920 as amended? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Tenzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Kroschinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 49-20 as amended was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number 106-20?
An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Use, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 3075
An ordinance amending and supplementing Title fifteen land usage, chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning of the San Francisco County Code as amended for property located at three zero seven five zero Edison Road and a property parcel including three tracts of land located at the intersection of Elderberry Road, Early Road and Spruce Road from A Agricultural District to I Industrial District, petitioner Kenneth E. Sebastian, Jr.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
President, number one zero six dash twenty comes to the full council with a favorable recognition.
Thank you very much. Area Plan?
All right, Ryan Fellows again with the area plan offices on the eleventh floor. The facts of this case are very much similar to the case that was just, uh, voted upon, so I will not belabor reading the same information twice. Um, this is two pieces of property that are under the same petition. The boxy one on the north side, uh, is twenty-seven acres, which is, uh, directly adjacent to IONTEC and IONCO. Then the L-shaped one is an additional thirty-six acres, so that's sixty-three acres total. And here you see the, uh, surrounding zoning use again, uh, very similar to the slide from before for the previous rezoning. Uh, there's a picture of the property, uh, there is one house on the north that is all, uh, tillable land. And then here's another picture from the, uh, the L-shaped property sister roads where, where Elderberry and Early and Spruce all intersect near each other with IONTEC and IONCO in the background on the right side there. And, uh, there is the, uh, the site plan, which doesn't contemplate a specific use at this time. And we've seen these, uh, agricultural slides before for goal one. And the industrial slides, uh, for encouraged economic development is goal two. And the future land use map is there with the, uh, light blue highlighting the industrial growth area and the dark blue highlighting the industrial growth reserve. And again, uh, there's the heavy usage, which we've discussed before, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about. And again, the summation slide with the reasonable regard to the property criteria enumerated before. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for area plan from council? Hearing none. Petitioner?
Uh, good evening, Mr. President. This is Peter J. Augustino again with attorney at law with offices at one thirty-one South Taylor Street on behalf of Kenneth Sebastian, Jr., the petitioner. Uh, I've already made a, a lot of the key points that I was going to make already in, uh, support of the prior petition. Just to, uh, repeat that this is part of the core industrial area. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, and, uh, there is interest in the area. Uh, Mr. Sebastian will continue to farm until, uh, the use does get converted, so it will be, uh, remain active farmland until it, uh, can be converted to industrial. And, uh, I would be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from council for the petitioner?
Mr. President?
Mr. Augustino?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski? Do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Augustino, do, do you want to elaborate on the potential company that is looking at the property in regards to what they potentially could bring to the county, or do you, do you want to defer that to Mr. Shalio?
Uh, I would defer to Mr. Shalio, but I, I know that the company, that I can say sure some things that are up in the air could potentially involve four hundred to five hundred workers. Um, it is, uh, I would consider it to be, uh, probably a medium level industrial type facility with starting out with about thirty acres up to seventy-five acres. Um, and, uh, so I, I think I would leave to Mr. Shalio. He's been handling those. I believe that this prospect is still in play. Uh, and to use Mr. Nolan's words from the committee meeting, it still is a fifty-fifty.
Mr. Shalio, would you care to comment? Mr. Shalio?
Mr. Morton?
Is Mr. Shalio still on?
I'm, I'm sorry. Somebody used the microwave in my house and they kicked me out of the, the Zoom. Um, was, was there a question?
Yeah, Mr. Krasinski, Mr. Krasinski had a question for you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Shalio?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Augustino elaborated a little bit, but would you care to comment on the potential company that's coming in? What, in regards to what it could provide to San Diego County in regards to jobs and so on and what type of facility? You know, based on your conversations with the, the company?
Yeah, I understand it is, it was a, uh, uh, construction products manufacturer. Uh, would, would provide three hundred to five hundred jobs at full capacity. Uh, a- again, one of the challenges on this site is, is it's currently paying industrial values, uh, uh, at, at this time, so, uh, industrial development on this site would, would certainly add, uh, tremendous, uh, increment value to the, the development area. Um, I, again, part of the challenge is because this area is an industrial or is in a TIF district, a lot of the revenue would be collected in the TIF district, so. So it, it, it does provide value, uh, uh, but, uh, a lot of the property value again is collected by the, the new Carlisle TIF.
I think, and, and looking at the letter, Bill, it, it, this is so, in the range of a five hundred, seven hundred, fifty thousand square foot building?
That's, that's correct. Uh, yeah, I mean, which is, you know, certainly a larger format building. A lot of the buildings being built up in the Amerplex are, are in that two to five hundred thousand range. So if it was to be built all the way out to the, the, the largest capacity, uh, it would be a very, uh, very sizable building. Um, a- again, sizable building, uh, a lot of property taxes that that would generate, a lot of jobs to put it together, so a, a lot of, a lot of value that this adds, uh, over, over a period of time. And then the, the number of jobs is, is pretty significant. Again, at this point in time, we don't know what the value is of those jobs, uh, uh, you know, what the, what the dollar per hour value is of those jobs. But that would be part of the due diligence the county would do as, as this process moves forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes, uh, Mr. Augustino is, uh, representing the petitioner to be amenable to the, I guess, let's call it the standard core development area, Mr. Petitioner.
All in standard? I'm all for the all-in standard and yes, the petitioner would be amenable to the, uh, previously recorded, uh, conditions on the other Sebastian parcel. I, I think the only exception here is that I do not believe there are any wetlands on this particular parcel or forested areas, so. Uh, just to clarify, those would not be part of these commitments because they would not apply to this parcel. Um, but the other-
I would expect them to maintain all of the existing wetlands.
Well, there are none in this particular.
There you go.
Well.
And that's easy to take care of. And I'd like to make that amendment to this bill as well.
Do I hear a second on Mr. Nolan's amendment?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Bill one oh six dash twenty is amended. We'll now open the public hearing on bill number one oh six dash twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Mr. President, Jeff Ray, President, CEO, Southland Regional Chamber with offices at one oh one North Michigan Street in South Bend. Just, uh, reiterating some of my comments from before, this is a differentiator in our mind. It helps, uh, uh, put you ahead of other parcels, uh, in the area. There are very few industrial zones that have this type of infrastructure available, uh, near them. And we think the zoning, uh, makes it more realistic that you, um, actually, uh, uh, land a prospect there. And, and like the previous one, we would voice our, uh, the chamber's approval or the, uh, support of you approving this ordinance with the, especially with the amendments that Mr. Nolan made. We think that's a good practice out there to really try to protect the, the kinds of uses that go in.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of bill one oh six dash twenty?
Uh, Mr. President, Bill Shalio, Economic Development, again, uh, uh, the opportunity to put this property together with the property next to it and then ultimately the Ward property is, as we put all of these together, uh, consistent land uses, uh, we're already seeing development, uh, interest in the area. And so we have to, uh, put in some new use into that building, so, uh, just appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of bill number one oh six dash twenty? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of bill one oh six dash twenty?
I would. My name's Jennifer Betts. I live at two three one five zero Roosevelt Road. I, I just have a question for Mr. Shalio. Um, I guess my question is, what, why did we make all the comments on the area management plan? Could you tell me what's been, what's been overdid with them? Oh, was that, I mean, how is that actually impacting the outcome and allowing the community to have a voice? Could you just let me know where we are in that process?
Ma'am, is there anywhere you could speak up? We can barely hear you.
Yeah, I didn't hear, I didn't hear a word she said to Raffia.
Sure. I was just wondering about the comments that the public made, um, on the area management plan. We made them almost a year ago. And I was just wondering if Mr. Shalio could address why the Antero Group didn't amend the area management plan or hasn't given us any feedback on that. I just feel confused that we're still making decisions when the public still has had very limited participation in these processes. Or maybe somebody on the, the council would know the answer to that question. I mean, we're paying, I don't know, I think it's over ten million dollars now we've spent on land and consultants and all of this for the IEC. So I just, I'd like to know where the money's going if we're not even, you know, area management plans aren't even being edited and amended with new comments.
Mr. Shalio, any comments?
Yeah, yes, uh, President Morton, members of the council, one of the things that has been happening in the background, uh, as, as we've not only taken into account the comments that were originally made, which, which prompted some comments or prompted some changes in the area management plan, but also as we continue to work with the town, the townships, uh, redevelopment commission, board of commissioners, uh, on, on some of the changes that have come as part of the core development area. Uh, those changes have prompted additional changes into the area management plan. In fact, we had a call last week with, uh, with our project team, uh, working on those updates. We anticipate that we'll be able to roll out a, a new updated area management plan, uh, you know, early this year. Uh, this is one of these things that it has lagged for a while, but again, uh, the consensus of the town, county, that, uh, like the leadership, uh, to help us put together, uh, uh, some new directions as we go forward. Yeah, plan. So I'm gonna see that, uh, a certain part of the work that the comprehensive plan is to be managed here and will just a component of that. I think your radar oven may be affecting your voice on this one.
I just, I, I, I just would like to respectfully ask the council, I, I don't understand why we're spending millions of dollars not actually getting results for those millions of dollars and then make speculative decisions on that. It just kind of seems like a, a pretty poor way to govern. So I respectfully asked you to wait until we have a plan in place and the community has spoken into it. And then perhaps we could revisit this rezoning for what sounds like a really wonderful thing if there's actually, you know, this many jobs coming to the area, but I just, I'm not sure where the evidence is that all of this will be happening and we're giving away all of our farmland and our future in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I, I have a question, um, it was gonna be for Mr. Shalio, but if, if Mr. Fellows is still on the line, he might be able to answer this. Um, just kind of, as we're working on our new comprehensive plan, you know, I, I think the, the point that we kind of continue to hear the public on, on the, the future of the IEC is very important. One thing I wanted to make sure I was understanding right. These properties we're looking at right now are either the, the majority or entirety within the previously identified industrial target or reserve zones from the comprehensive plan from two thousand and two. Is that, am I, am I remembering that right? Uh, yes, I switched the slides over. The, uh, light blue is the industrial growth area with the dark blue is the industrial growth reserve. Um, so the northerly square is completely within the industrial growth area. And then the, the L-shaped one is partially within, uh, both the industrial growth and the industrial reserve. Uh, back when those were made at that time, it was known that those were meant to be generalized blobs is the word I'm gonna use. And, uh, it was never thought that we would be exactly using those lines. Uh, just meant to give people an indication of where we're talking about, and this is completely, uh, commiserate with that. And so, some of the properties we've discussed in the, in the past, um, may have been adjacent or had, I, 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 I think the one was three percent within these, uh, blobs, but, but these ones are I, I mean, the one we're talking about right now is a hundred percent within. Is that, is that right? Uh, one of the two was a hundred percent within. The other one is, um, I don't think I have the number right in front of me, but it, it's sixty somewhere or so for the other one. And those, those growth areas, that, that's a representation of the current comp plan? Correct. This is the two thousand and two comprehensive plan as adopted. Okay, and, and apologies, I wasn't part of that process, but there, there was public input at, at that point. I mean, how, how did we decide that these were going to be our target growth areas and, and make these blobs on a map? Yeah, there was a very robust public participation process in the generation of the two thousand and two comprehensive plan. It actually, uh, the planning took two years with, uh, even additional time before that for kind of building up in preparation. Um, so it, it did very much have a complete public process and, uh, ideally, this plan should have had these blobs, these, these industrial growth area, industrial growth reserve be more tightly connected to the, um, the EDC, the, the economic development, uh, the TIF areas, I should say. Um, I don't know why that didn't happen. I wasn't here for that. Um, ideally, those, those, uh, those lines should have been much tighter with each other. Um, but, uh, the area plan commission, when they reviewed the TIF boundaries, at each opportunity said that those TIF boundaries matched with what the comprehensive plan and the economic development goals of the county were. Um, so, and those were, were both public processes as well. Uh, thank you for that and, and hopefully we continue to get public input as we develop a new one and uh, take your considerations about tying those lines together with a new comp, comp plan. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition of bill number one oh six? 106-20?
Yes, I would. Thanks.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, this is Steve Francis. I live at 54174 Judy Lake Drive up in Clay Township. I'd made comments before, and I just want to reiterate what those comments were because what I said in the, in the original rezoning of the large parcels is continuing. And that is, I said at the time that this is going to be, you know, a fait accompli with what I called piecemeal rezoning going on as properties become available. As we're told, there are possible industrial sites or industrial businesses that are, that are saying they will come in. And, you know, I've been, I was rebuked by that, by several people, by saying, oh, no, it's not piecemeal in any way, shape, or form. But it really is. If you look at this, each, you know, you've had many votes on piece by piece parcels, and that is a piecemeal plan. Now, it may fit within a, a, a plan that was developed 18 years ago, I might add, and not re, and not, you know, not updated. But we're in the middle of an updating of the plan. And what we're going to hear as we, as we get involved in that update, and constructing a new plan is, oh, well, it's already done. It's a done deal. These are already industrial. All of the other places are industrial. They're bordering now on other agricultural lands, which might also be included as industrial. So what you're agreeing to is going ahead with a plan 18 years old without reviewing it at a time where you could pause this for a year or two, and really develop it in a way that is appropriate, I think. And that is to develop the plan, update the plan first with full public input, and then start doing this process. I believe you're being sold a pig and a poke here. We don't know what the, what the property is going to be used for. It was said, it was said it was being used for medium industrial, not light industrial. So that worries me right there. Construction materials and building those construction materials don't seem to me to be light industrial, as much of as assembly might be. So, right there, you're, I think, violating the conditions which you're going to place on these properties. I have yet to see those conditions, by the way. If they're posted on the website, I can't find them. So I would like that to happen, or to be referred to that somehow. But I urge you to reject this, to really back up again. And, and you're going to have more. I mean, there's just going to be more that come your way. You're doing this in a piecemeal fashion. You're relying on a plan that's 18 years old at a time where we're embarking upon developing a new plan. And I know that we're going to be told it's a done deal. So please vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of Bill number 106-20?
I would like to speak in opposition of the bill.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Christopher Cobb. I live at 215 East Pocahonton Street, South Bend, Indiana. I appreciate the proactive way in which the council has, has amended this bill. I think that it's, it's movement gradually in the direction of a, of a consistent plan that is, that includes public input. But I want to reiterate for the, for the council's knowledge that I'm in contact with a lot of people in the New Carlisle and all of township area. And I'm not hearing from those people that these marvelous changes that have been proposed, that, that we hear about in terms of, well, now, now the New Carlisle Town Council is, is working with the commissioners and we're all, we're all on the same page. That's not the case. They are not on the same page. They, they are at best resigned to what can't be undone now. And so, the public is paying attention to what you do, and the public that is most directly affected by this, I think, is not in favor of what's being done. So insofar as that carries weight with you, I would say, everything that you do that places real restraint and limits on this growth is something that is going to be in keeping with the wishes of most of the residents of the affected area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition of Bill number 106-20? Hearing none. The petitioner has three minutes to rebut. Any comments that have been made in opposition?
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, Peter Agostino, again. Just quickly to answer one question that was asked. The prior commitments are filed with the county recorder under document number 2020-39678. And I would be glad to forward a copy if that person contacts me after the meeting with an email address, so they can see what type of restrictions there are, and we're willing to agree. I think the work of government is difficult, particularly when you make these decisions. However, I think one important ingredient in this process that needs to be respected is the part that is played by the property owners who take risk, great risk, particularly as farmers, to buy property, spend money, spend years to develop it. They ought to have a right to be prepared to sell the property for some profit. That's a right protected by the Constitution, just as much as the right of people to come and speak against this, so is the right of the property owners. And I would ask that the council approve this petition, subject to the restrictions noted. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing on Bill number 106-20 as amended. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
For full.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who was that second by? I'm sorry.
Danzright.
Thank you. Motion to pass Bill number 10620 as amended. It was made by Councilman Kanarecki. It was seconded by Councilman Kandzright. Any further comments from any council member on Bill number 106-20? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Taloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Kandzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki? Oh, thank you. Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Kroschinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Hess.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 106-20 as amended. It was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number 117-20?
The ordinance admitting and supplementing Title 15 land usage, Chapter 154, planning and zoning of the San Francisco County Code is amended for property located at 1364 Forum McKinley Highway, from C Commercial District, site plan, site plan specific, to C Commercial District, not site plan specific. Petitioner, Horizon Blue Investments LLC.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please.
Mr. President, still comes before council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Area Plan?
Good evening. This is Ryan Fellows again with Area Plan. As described, this property was already zoned C commercial a while ago, specific to just being an auto body shop for auto conversions. This is to remove that site plan specific use, so it could be used for any C Commercial District. What you have here is a property located near the intersection with Current Road with McKinley Highway. In this area, you see the property across the street to the north is zoned I industrial, and the property on the corner is also zoned commercial. There is residential properties to the south, but to the, to the west, I want to note that, that's a fire station right there. So there's a picture of the property from McKinley Highway. And the site plan does not specify any specific change in use. It's just so that the, they're interested in selling it and having it be some new commercial user in the future. Perhaps maybe a car dealership was one of the inquiries that we received. I don't know if that'll be the ultimate user, though. But the, the, this has gone through the review process and comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council for Area Plan?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Kandzright?
Mr. Fellows?
Yes.
I believe this property is in my council district. And my question is to you, when we go from site plan specific to no site plan specific, what does that essentially mean? And my concerns are, would we have any say in a future commercial purchaser of that property, once we remove the site plan specific language? Can you explain that and elaborate on that a little more for me, please?
Certainly, yeah. Everywhere that is zoned a particular district is, unless it's site plan specific, is just kind of generally, small g, commercially available for any kind of commercial use listed in the ordinance. And if there was something that was beyond that use that is on the special use, then there'd be a special use permit, which was a separate actual form of public review process. We'll get to a special use permit as a next agenda item. But anything that could be conceivably the regular commercial use, it could be, you know, retailer, it could be a gas station, it could be a fast food place. Those would be potentially more intensive users than, than what it is right now. Generally, everywhere that's zoned is, has that kind of, not quite a blank check, but a check that's only big enough to encompass the, the list of users that could be on the C commercial list, unless they go beyond that to get a special use permit, or if it doesn't meet those, then they'd have to rezone. But it was a practice of previous administrations where if someone didn't feel completely comfortable going all the way with kind of that, not blank check, but a check big enough to encompass the whole list, then they would just zone it to one of the lines on the list rather than the entire list. And so really, what you end up with is instead of a zoning map, you have a, a site plan use map, which isn't really proper zoning. But I won't get into that in any depth. Hopefully, I've answered your question. If not, please.
I'm going to restate something you said. So it could have a more intensive use, you said, by being non-site plan specific. It could be a fast food drive-through. It could do that. That could happen by being non-specific.
Possible. They would have to figure out how to either convert the building as it is, or they'd have to tear it down and put something new up. But they would have to meet all of the development standards in the code book, and it would have to go through plan review when they applied for building permit, whether it was to refurbish it or to do a new building. And they would have to address all the setbacks and landscaping and buffering of the code book.
So without trying to put you on the spot, something, let me ask you this question. What a, what a company like, let's say you run your lawn fertilizer business, your Terminex type insect pest control business, would that fall under commercial uses if you wanted to have your warehouse and your vehicle, your fleet there? Would that be commercial? My concern is that's an environmentally sensitive area. Just to the west of that property is Willow Creek. I've got, I've not gotten any calls or remonstrance against this, but I do know the area very well. And Willow Creek is a tributary to the St. Joseph River, and there is, you know, fish and wildlife that use that creek. And directly to the north of that property, or correctly directly to the south of that property is a residential area, and this beyond those houses is a school. So that's why I give an example of that type of use. And obviously, the fire station to the direct west of that property, I think that's not going to be used, I think, in Penn Township's long-range plan when they build a new station on McKinley. But that's why I bring that up, because of the environmental sensitivity of Willow Creek and the school and residences to the north, to the south, I'm sorry. So could, could you have a business like I described there?
I'm going to ask and see if Abby's on, on the line. Abby Wiles, our executive director, see if she knows the answer directly. But the, that might be a use that would, you'd have to be the I, which is just across the road, which also has the creek running, running through that area. I don't know the ins and outs, where I could just quote, what would be the development standards and what would be the additional review?
Yeah, Ryan. So there's Abby Wiles, Director of Area Plan Commission, Infrastructure Planning and Growth. The C Commercial District has a host of uses that are permitted. And in regards to your specific question, exterminating shops is a permitted use. I just want to point back to something that Ryan said earlier that is absolutely correct and important to know. Any?
I didn't, you say forbidden or permitted use?
Permitted.
Permitted, okay.
Yes. So exterminating shops are a permitted use in the C District.
Thank you.
Yeah. One thing that Ryan said that I think is really key here, and then for all of the ones, because Ryan mentioned that the practice of assigning a site plan to an approval is, was done pretty regularly. And Ryan and I had, have communicated with even former staff of Area Plan, and this was pretty consistent in terms of removing this site plan, having them zone site plan specific to no site plan. One thing that's important to note, it does have to meet all developmental requirements of the zoning ordinance. So if you have like a change of use, or a change of use that's triggering improvements, like an addition or reconfiguration of parking, it doesn't mean that they get exempted from everything that the zoning ordinance requires. They would still have to meet those requirements.
Anything else? Mr. Kandzright?
Well, I don't think so. It just gives me great concern that, just because of that property specifically, where it's located next to the creek, and, and the school and the residences to the south, it just gives me a little bit of concern. By, by going without final site plan approval required, just gives me concern. I appreciate your answers. I, I think that's probably why in the past, we had a lot of site plan specific rezonings, because I think there were some areas that did probably require some sensitivity, given certain site-specific characteristics that maybe not every site had, such as this one which has residential abutment. You know, there's no buffer like you normally have. You normally would have a buffer between commercial and residential. There's no buffer there. And we have a school directly to the south, and then we have that, what I would say environmentally sensitive creek that runs south into the St. Joseph River. So that, that's just a little bit of my background, why I think we did have site-specific zoning, as Ryan refers to in the past. So in some cases, I think it might have been needed or necessary. So I just may disagree on this one. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions for Area Plan from council? Thank you. Petitioner? Petitioner?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
If you don't find an addition, or I would make a motion to return to committee.
Petitioner?
I know we're in this Zoom era. It might be a couple of seconds before somebody gets connected.
It's like calling user one is trying to speak. I'm not hearing anything.
I'm sorry. Did you say the petitioner was trying to speak?
Looks like maybe that's you.
Pardon?
The window here that's identified as call-in user one, I saw it lighten up after Matt Mark Tanzright spoke. I think that's you. I just love that you were speaking.
So the petitioner is not on the line?
It would appear, and I will second Mr. Tanzright's motion.
We have a motion and a second to return. Bill number 117-20 to committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Bill number 117-20 is returned to committee. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number 120-20?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Morton, I'm sorry. I wasn't, I was muted. But I will work with the petitioner. I will try and make contact with the petitioner between now and our next committee meeting to see if we can't reach some kind of a compromise, at least on the environmental aspect of whatever proposals you say you want to use going forward.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Clerk, will you please read bill number 120-20?
Ignorance approving the petition for a special use filed by TDK Estates LLP for property being located at 1968 State Line Road. Saying being filed with the area Board of Zoning Appeals, petitioner, TDK Estates LLP.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number 120-20 goes before council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
Yes, this is Ryan Fellows with area plan again. And this is a site, this is an example of a special use permit. In this instance, our code book for single-family residential property requires a special use permit for, what is this, basically a two-family dwelling, a something along the lines of like a duplex. And here you see the layout of this. It's along the state line, State Line Road near the intersection with 933. This is four different criteria, and it's kind of encompassed within the will not be interest to public health, safety, comfort, community moral standards, convenience, or general welfare. It will not injure or adversely affect the use of the adjacent area or property values therein. It'll be consistent with the character of the district in which it is located and land use authorized therein. And its proposed use is compatible with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council for area plan? Hearing none. Petitioner?
Yes. Good evening. Hi, this is Mike Huber with Abin Marsh Consultants, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. I'm here representing TDK Estates LLP. Mr. David Kaminsky with TDK Estates is also participating on the call this year, on the meeting this evening. As Ryan outlined, we are requesting a special use permit to allow two-family dwellings duplexes to be developed on the site. The project is going to be served by Water and Sewer Utilities from Niles Township. It's located about 600 feet east of the 933 commercial corridor. The overall density of the project is going to be 14 units. It's a 3.6 acre parcel. So we're right at about 3.8 units per acre, or about quarter acre lots. The equivalent of, the subdivision just to the south of us also includes predominantly quarter acre lots. So we're kind of consistent with the density of the existing residential even to the south. Abin Marsh recently completed a corridor study for the redevelopment commission for St. Joe County. And in that, we did notice that there are tremendous opportunities along the corridor and just off the corridor for new residential development to occur of all different types. Some mixed use, some duplex, some multifamily, single family. We think those kinds of projects will only help strengthen the retail corridor, 933, and help that thrive as well. Want to recognize that this was sent from the VZA, favorable recommendation, and will be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on bill number 120-20. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on bill 120-20. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
Motion for approval.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass, bill number 120-20, was made by Councilman Krasinski. And it was seconded by Councilman Canariki. Any further comments from any council member on 120-20? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katandright?
Yes.
Mr. Canarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess? Ms. Hess?
She said yes.
Thank you. Mr. Taloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 120-20 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Under miscellaneous, we have bill number 125-20. Clerk, will you please read that bill?
Ignorance in the St. Joseph County Council approving a collective bargaining agreement between St. Joseph County, Indiana and the telecommunications of St. Joseph County, St. Joseph County, Indiana, APSME for the time period commencing January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2023. Petitioner, public safety answering point, PSAP.
Petitioner?
Good evening again. Peter Agostino with offices at 131 South Taylor Street on behalf of the petitioner. Before you is approval of a collective bargaining agreement that was negotiated with the local APSME for our PSAP workers. It covers a three-year period beginning January 1 of this year through December 31, 2023. There are 45 articles in this agreement covering 40 pages. If it's okay with council, I won't read them. The highlights are basically, as was reported back in an email to council members back in November. There's a cost of $23,000 for longevity feature. There's some added incentives for certification and punctuality, each for $7,300 each. And then there is a component for allowing for some wellness overtime as an additional benefit to the employees at a cost of $61,000. That's the financial impact of this, the PSAP. And I think Ray Schultz is online. I think are in a good cash position with respect to this. And I would be glad to answer any questions. And I don't know if Ray wants to say anything. And I think we have is online as well.
Thanks, Pete. Yeah, I think it's, as Mr. Agostino said, there's an implication for longevity, but that's deferred to the 2022 budget. There's the only fiscal impact for 2021 is the incentives for certification. Oh, I'm sorry. The increase in training officer pay. Everything else is deferred to 2022 as part of the agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Any questions from council?
This is Dick File. A question I have is in in a lot of organizations, the HR department is very much involved in whether other parts of the organization have this benefit or that benefit for the purpose of coordination of benefits. Because anytime one part of an organization has benefits not given to others, it creates a lot of concern and discussion on the part of other people who don't get that benefit. So there's a lot of argument for some centralization and some consistency when it comes to benefits, particularly. Oftentimes, pay itself is separate because it depends a lot on the skills involved. And the department often knows the most about skills. So my question is, why doesn't the a matter of this type be actually very much a part of our HR department discussion so that we get coordination of benefits in all the departments of the county?
I don't have the answer to that. In my three years here, and from my understanding, my time before, the director and Mr. Agostino basically handle negotiations on behalf of the county. And that's why we probably ran into last year. And we had Mr. Krasinski in there, Bobby Kay was in there and extremely helpful. And honestly, when there was a lot of, there was a lot of looking back into other departments to make sure that we were trying to stay in best in line with other departments. I can tell you that with that being the case, the PSAP workers are behind in some of the other areas of the county in regards to those benefits. We could be kicked around shift differential and some other things and longevity that the PSAP actually has been behind. So I don't know if we're kind of putting the cart before the horse and catching up at a later time. But this is a, this is a good agreement that got us to where we need to be for the, for the time being.
I just, I just would recommend that as a general subject. Again, I think, you know, when you get different, if you got different benefits in different departments, I think that's one reason you have an HR department. And we should be using them on those matters. Not that they have total control, but they certainly should have an input.
Mr. File, if I may respond, I do work very closely with the health department or the HR department. And so we are aware that sometimes there are changes in benefits. That's one of the benefits of the people organizing themselves to bargain for something. And so we do try to maintain consistency as much as we possible with certain benefits between our HR and what the union gets. But there's sometimes where because of, like in this case, we've got a 24/7 operation. It doesn't fit neatly within the confines of, you know, eight to five workplace setting. Different conditions, and we have a union present. So under the law, we are required to negotiate in good faith with the union. So that's why we're at that's why we're at where we're at at this point in a general sense.
Got a question for Mr. Schultz, if I could?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that Mr. Krasinski was there and he was extraordinarily helpful. I'm just confused. Are you sure that was Bobby Kay?
It was. It was. And we made him a thumbprint on the way in.
All six of the meetings, Mr. Nolan. My hero.
And we only had him for about 20 hours, so.
Any other questions from council?
Any question?
Mr. Taloyan?
Pete or Steve Dalton, how does this affect the budget going forward?
Mr. Dalton is, I believe, is not, is no longer on the meeting?
I can, I can tell you that this is, this is, this raise is sustainable for a very long time based on the cash reserves that PSAP has acquired, has saved over time.
At the budget meetings last summer, you mentioned that the state wanted us to spend down the reserves. Is this part of that plan?
This is not part of that plan, however, it will help satisfy that based on whatever you guys decide for 2022. It doesn't have a fiscal impact on 2021.
Thank you.
Hey, Mark, this is John Murphy. In 2020, the PSAP did spend down the state fund by about $409,000. It wasn't as much as we had thought it would be because we actually needed supplemental distribution from the state of about $500,000. So, but in total, we were up from 2020. We actually increased cash reserves in 2020.
Thank you.
Mr. Morton?
Yes, sir.
If I can comment on that, we, the bargaining committee did keep in close contact with the auditor's office, in particular, John Murphy. And I thank John for his help during this process. And I don't know if Pete or Ray want to comment on that. But we did keep in contact with Mr. Murphy in regards to the figures and what we were doing, negotiating with the union, that it was going to be sustainable for the next three years.
Yeah, we were, when we, when we had, before we made decisions and signed off on, signed off on the negotiations piece by piece, John, John Murphy is always super responsive and able to kind of work through that stuff with us. So he was able to, you know, stay on top of it really quick for us and did a good job.
Any other questions from council? For the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on bill number 125-20. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed on 125-20. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
Motion for approval.
A motion to pass, bill number 125-20, was made by Councilman Krasinski. And it was seconded by Councilman Katandright. Any further comments on any, from any council member on 125-20?
Mr. Morton?
Yes, sir.
It's already been mentioned, but I wanted to seriously thank the committee that put this together and put all the work into that new negotiation. And I especially want to thank Councilman Krasinski for his diligence and spending six meetings, helping to negotiate. I don't know if he helped negotiate, or I'm sure he was part of the negotiation process. But thank him for dedicating that time to doing this. It's a lot of time to dedicate to something as important as this and to such an important group of people that work to keep our community safe. So I want to thank him and the entire negotiating committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from any council member on 125-20? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Canarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Taloyan?
Yes.
Katandright?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 125-20 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. I was just informed that the petitioner for bill number 117-20 is now on. Mr. Courier, would you?
Yes, sir. My most sincere apologies for not getting in there.
Hold on, hold on, sir. Hold on, sir. I believe we need a motion to take it out of committee if that's what we, if that's the desire of the council. Mr. Katandright, you? Any comment on it?
Personally, I prefer leaving committee. We'll address it at our next, next month's council meeting. Now, working again with Mr. Courier, unless there were some, we're getting very time sensitive about this.
I would agree. I would agree.
Okay. Well, sir, unfortunately, there was a motion to return your, the bill back to committee. So we will need to hear it next month.
I would, can I speak for just a second? If you don't, if you allow me to. It is a little time sensitive. My current client is, they're in the process of trying to sell this and it's contingent upon this rezon. So he's trying to move this property along with the contingency of the current buyer is looking that it needs to be at this other zoning, otherwise it will not. So to delay it for, you know, we've been through this process for a few months. So I'd please ask you reconsider if we could just talk about it for a moment to be able to get this finalized.
Okay, so council members, I think that this air falls on me. I, this particular person was not on any of the paperwork that I received from Area Plan. He reached out to me independently. So when I sent him the agenda, I sent him with last year's Zoom information. So when I updated it today with all the craziness that was going around, I forgot to send it to him. I did send it to the petitioners that were in the packet. I just forgot to send it to him. So this really is my error. And I'm so sorry. So I'm not sure what you want to do with that.
With that said, Mr. Katanzright, Mr. Talion, you spoke up?
I didn't hear what Ms. Pravoh had to say. Couldn't hear it.
Okay, so, so I.
Still can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Now we can.
Okay, sorry. So what happened was when I received this information from Area Plan and I sent all the information to all the petitioners that were listed in the packet I received from Area Plan, this gentleman reached out to me independently. So I didn't realize that he should have gotten the agenda. When I sent him the agenda, I sent him with last year's Zoom information. And then the craziness of today and changing the agenda, I simply forgot to send it to him. I sent it to the petitioners that were in the packet. He just wasn't listed in there. So it's my mistake that I didn't get this to him this afternoon when I was updating this agenda and sending it out. So I don't know what you want to do with that. So this potentially is my error. However, he was not a petitioner. He was not listed in the packet that I received from Area Plan. So it's kind of weird.
Mr. Katanzright, pardon? Mr. Katanzright, Mr. Talion?
I wanted to take it out, based on that information, I wanted to take it out of committee and hear what the petitioner has to say, but. I'm making a motion to take it out of committee.
Do I hear a second?
Continue the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Thank you very much. The ayes have it. Clerk, will you please read bill number 117-20?
Yes. In order to amending and supplementing Title 15, I'm sorry, Title 4, land uses Chapter 154, planning and zoning of the San Jacinto County Code as amended for property located at 13644 McKinley Highway from C Commercial District Site Plant Specific to C Commercial District Not Site Plant Specific, petitioner Horizon Blue Investments LLC.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, the bill number 117-20 came from the committee with a favorable recommendation the first time and without any recommendations.
Thank you very much. Area Plan?
Raphael, Area Plan has left, but he did make, but he did make his presentation.
Okay, petitioner?
Yes, sir. Thank you again for reconsidering. Basically, looking, this property is, was previously zoned, straight zoning. It was altered to fit this one use. My client is looking to put it back to the original use to make it more marketable for a potential business to be moved into there. So we greatly appreciate your, your input and allowing us to make this site be available to the public and potentially a good use for the local community.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel for the petitioner?
Mr. Courier? Mr. Courier or Mr. Morton, I'm sorry.
Mr. Katanzright?
Mr. Courier?
Yes, sir.
Is that your name? Is it Michael Courier?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you with Horizon Blue or are you?
I'm, I'm with Jones Peachtree Finsky, our survey and engineering firm out of South Bend.
Okay. Do you know what the proposed use of a proposed potential purchaser?
I do not. Basically, the intent was just to make it back to commercial and it would fall within the district use or the zoning use of standard commercial.
Have you been on the site before?
I've driven by it many times. Yes, sir.
Are you aware of any environmental sensitivity to the site?
Not that I'm aware of. No, sir.
Okay. Well, there's, there's a, there's a wet, there's a tributary to the San Jose River on the western edge of this property called Little Creek that has fish and wildlife in it. My only concern about going to a clear commercial zoning without restrictions was that that's a really environmentally sensitive area. There's homes directly to the south with no buffer between the commercial business and the homes. And there's a school just beyond the houses to the south. So, and there's a fire station to the direct west across the creek. So I had, I had some environmental concerns about giving the owner the ability to have a non-site plan specific commercial zoning. That was my concern. Can you allay my concerns any way?
Sure thing. Right now, it's concerned or it's considered, you know, automotive specific. So I mean, you're looking, you're looking with automatically right now, you're dealing with oils, paints, you know, all the stuff that's bad for the environment.
Right.
Where if you're more to general, you're more, you can go with many different businesses that are much more environmentally safe. That could be to benefit the local community compared to the automotive specific.
Area Plan's not here to represent themselves, but I asked about some of the uses, like for example, some of the uses that could be going there. Could be something like a pest, pest control insect control business if they wanted to under the commercial zoning without, without any kind of site plan. That was a use that could be used there. So I mean, that, I'm not sure that would be any better if that got located there as, you know, as the former automotive use was there when it was the Corvette remodeling shop or the Corvette shop.
I guess I would, I guess I would think of like, you know, Griffin Pest Control or something like that. Most of the stuff that they'd be using, you know, would be around your residential homes and with their chemicals would be stored in safe compartments. Maybe you wouldn't have like the leakages or seepages or, you know, old cars sitting around out back that need to be worked on.
Right. As long as those quantities of material don't get released, you know, into the adjoining, adjoining creek.
Yes, sir.
Would your client be, be willing to commit to any kind of a commitment that whatever business would locate there would have some, would be environmentally friendly or environmentally safe?
I guess potentially. The hardest part was, you know, he doesn't know who his buyer is, you know, and potentially moving forward. You know, I would think that, you know, through the zoning process of the county, you know, they're not setting up for unenvironmentally safe things to be moved into anywhere. So I mean, to try to segregate one company or one business out from one or another, it seems like it'd be pretty hard to do. I mean, you could, I mean, you could have any kind of business there and make a, an environmental spill could happen. So to segregate one, one business out over the other, it seems like it'd be a little bit more difficult to do. But I mean, we can, I can definitely share your, your thoughts and expressions and I can discuss with them and, you know, we can see if we can go. But it seems like the county has, you know, certain zoning standards and there's like zoning near this that would be, you know, hopefully not a detriment to the community.
And I'm not predicting that would happen. I just have concerns because I've got residences that above this property with no buffer between typically we have an O office or a B business buffer between commercial and residential like that. And obviously, we as the county zoned it that way many years ago.
Yes, sir.
But trying to, since they're looking to change the zoning to less restrictive, trying to look for a way to protect the homeowners, the creek and the school and the fire department.
Understood. I would really hope for the business that moving there would be more of a, serve those people more than a hindrance to those people.
Because really the intensity of the use with the Corvette shop wasn't all that bad, really. I mean, they didn't, they were never open late. And there weren't bright lights, you know. So I mean, if it did get a higher intensity use, which is a lot in commercial, like maybe a fast food restaurant or something like that, not saying that's going to go there, but I mean, it could be more, it could be more intensive in the end.
Just, just for information, Abby Wildes is back on for Area Plan. Please continue.
Hi there, this is Abby. I apologize. I jumped off and was texted to come back on. Can, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Great. I would, I'm sorry, I only caught the, probably the second half of the conversation about ensuring an environmentally friendly use. And I would say what makes those kind of commitments challenging to enforce are things that are over, that could be subjective. You know, when we have a development proposal that comes forward, who then makes the determination that it's, is or isn't an environmentally sensitive business, right? So that's the only concern that I would have as staff. Prohibiting specific uses, that's one thing. But some of the language that's not clear and that's more subjective, I think, opens it up for the opportunity for staff to, to be making judgment calls that aren't necessarily based in the ordinance.
Just as a reference point, Abby, aren't we going to be looking at that item we gave, we amended our rules for tonight about adult businesses and adult uses? Aren't we looking to amend that portion of the zoning code for a specific situation?
Actually, the amendment that was introduced on first reading is pretty much administrative cleanup from, for the current zoning ordinance. So our current zoning ordinance makes reference to adult business uses and they are defined in the zoning ordinance, not being permitted within 500 feet of specific zoning districts or specific residential zoning districts and residential uses. And the residential zoning districts that we're asking to amend are references to zoning districts that previously existed in the cities of South Bend and Mishawaka. Both of those cities have since updated their zoning ordinance. And now we need to make sure that our current zoning ordinance references the districts that are up to date, the districts that are in the current zoning ordinances for the city of South Bend and city of Mishawaka. So that more or less is administrative cleanup. It's not any kind of, I would say, subjective language. It's making sure our ordinance aligns with what South Bend and Mishawaka's say currently.
Okay. Do you, on this specific rezoning we're looking at right now, or the change of commercial zoning here, was there an area of disturbance? I forgot.
There was not. And I think I, just as a matter of clarification, I believe Ryan and I both jumped off, so I apologize. Ryan, I think, you know, and this is not by any means to sell you on the rezoning, but just want to clarify for everyone on the meeting tonight. Ryan probably gave you the most intense commercial uses when he said what it could potentially be. And I see the facial expression because it's true. It's good to know, right? This could potentially be automobile repair, fast food. You know, you had brought up the exterminating shop. But I had previously in the chat posted a link to the C District, which is helpful. It outlines the list of permitted uses. And you'll see things like retail establishments and restaurants as well. Well, I noted that with the building in its current condition, it's probably not going to be a bakery, right? It'll probably be something more intense because that's how it's built to be. But I did post the list of uses for your reference.
I did see that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep. And then just, I don't know what the discussion was prior, or prior to me coming on when I jumped off the first time. What I would advise, and not that I think this is appropriate for every single rezoning, but rather than environmentally sensitive business or business that's environmentally sensitive is if you were to go the route of assigning commitments to actually identify specific uses that you wouldn't want to be permitted, rather than language that could be subjective, actually saying list A, B, and C uses.
Mark, could I jump in with a couple of questions?
Go, go ahead.
So, with, this property is adjacent to, and I think part of the parcels within a floodplain, is there any guidance, state or county specific as to what development can and can't happen within an identified floodplain?
Yeah. So I would have to look at the FEMA floodplain map to see if it's designated. It's one thing if the, oh, the rear portion of the property is floodplain. It's another if like the building is because there's certain regulations that would apply. And then in terms of wetlands, I would need to check the map. I'm sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head without consulting the maps.
Okay. And then I guess there's a second general question. I mean, if, if, say, for example, you know, just, just because we're talking about a pest control business did come in there. I mean, they're, they're clearly subject to all sorts of IDAM or EPA guidelines as well, right?
I am not sure what governing body has to sign off on like an exterminating business.
They're, they're regulated, I would think, Councilmember Kennerkey, by, by those agencies. They have to comply with regulations. I would agree with you on that. I guess, you know.
I guess, I would be curious if there's any restrictions just regarding, you know, since I do think it's at least adjacent to, if not part of the parcel being within the floodplain. Maybe that might limit what sort of uses regardless of the zone, Mark. I mean, I'm just kind of curious how that would work, but.
Yeah, that's interesting.
I'm trying to get you an answer on the floodplain map if I can. So I apologize for the delay.
It's in 14 or 18141C0217E. That whole area is in a minimal area, area of minimal flood hazard. So it's all in Zone X, even though there is a creek there, there is no defined flood zone.
So just for everyone's clarification, Zone X, not part of the federally designated floodplain, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from counsel for the petitioner? Hearing none. Open a public hearing on bill number 117-20. Does anyone wish, anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. Close the public hearing on bill number 117-20. Do I hear a motion on the bill? Do I hear a motion on the bill?
Hearing none, I would, the motion gets sent back to committee and let Mr. Katanzright try to work out these details with the petitioner. In the meantime, I know they said that there was some time sensitivity.
There's a motion back on the floor to return it to committee for lack of a motion to vote yea or nay. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to send bill number 117-20 back to committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Bill number 117-20 goes back to committee. That concludes public hearing this evening. That concludes public hearing this evening. Um, next is unfinished business. Next is new business. Under new business, uh, Councilman Katanzarite has expressed concern about the security in the county city building in light of what happened in Washington DC last week. So with that said, um, I asked Sheriff Redmond to address the council this evening. Sheriff Redmond?
Good evening. This is Sheriff William Redmond, uh, offices at four oh one West Sample Street in South Bend. And, uh, I was asked to, uh, speak a little bit about the, uh, concerns, which is obviously valid due to what's happened, uh, in our nation's capital. Um, I can tell you at this point, I have no information, no valid threats or any concerns uh, of any of our buildings here in St. Joseph County specific to our courthouses and the county city building. I will also say that I am in contact with all of our federal partners. We do have, um, officers assigned to each of those, which uh, consist of the US Marshals, the FBI, ATF and the DEA. Uh, we have no, uh, concerns or issues after discussing those concerns with them as well. Uh, I know there is, there has been some concerns about state Capitol buildings throughout the country that, uh, have, there have been some threats. Um, so we are taking these very seriously. I actually have a, uh, conference call tomorrow afternoon with uh, the FBI and Department of Homeland Security and other law enforcement throughout the country to talk about uh, what's occurred and what, uh, to expect, um, nationally. And then I know in that email that was sent by, uh, Councilman Katanzarite, it was mentioned about doing a, uh, potential security assessment. And just so everybody knows, uh, when I first took office back in two thousand nineteen, shortly thereafter, I did, uh, reach out to the US Marshal Service and asked them to do a, uh, security assessment of our buildings, uh, to get an update on where we were. Uh, they agreed at that time to do, uh, all of the four courthouses, uh, buildings, the three in the city of South Bend and one in Mishawaka. And as a result of that assessment, I then had discussion with our local judges. Magistrate uh, Gammage was kind of the lead on that. And after, uh, many meetings and discussion, uh, I'm proud to say that Magistrate Gammage did an outstanding job with following up with those assessments and, uh, making, uh, uh, the courthouse building safer as a result of that assessment. Uh, fast forward to twenty twenty, I made the same recommendation and request of the US Marshal Service to do an assessment of the county city building. And what I wanted to do was an unannounced, um, not letting anybody know that that assessment was going to be completed. I had to make arrangements with the Marshal Service to start that, uh, in February and going into March. And as, as we all know, um, we were struck with COVID. So that put a halt on that, uh, project. But it was something I had, uh, set motion and to, to do that assessment and see what improvements, uh, could be made and potentially done there. So I could certainly reach out to the US Marshal Service again to see where they're at and see if that is something we can do. The only issue right now is obviously the building is not at full capacity because of COVID. Um, so I'd feel a little bit better, um, having that assessment done uh, during regular working hours and business hours when the normal activity that we normally see uh, day to day is occurring. It's not to say we can't do some kind of assessment now of the building, uh, as a whole. And just so everybody knows also, the number of people that, uh, enter that, uh, the county city building on a yearly basis, according to our statistics and numbers, we had roughly four hundred and forty-nine thousand people enter the county city building in two thousand nineteen. So there's obviously a lot of pedestrian traffic coming through that building and it's certainly a concern. So, um, anything I can do to, uh, make it safer for our staff and the uh, county and city workers, as well as the people that visit those buildings on a day to day basis was certainly a priority. Um, so that's all I have right now. I'm willing to answer any questions that anybody would have.
Any questions for Sheriff Redmond?
I, I think Sheriff said you're saying that you've had no specific threats. Is that right?
That is correct. We have, there are no known threats to any of our buildings at this time. Uh, as I said, I'll be on a conference call with our FBI, the National FBI Office and the Department of Homeland Security tomorrow afternoon. Um, but certainly will, you know, keep the proper people notified if there were, uh, any concerns or threats being made.
Any other questions from council for Sheriff Redmond?
The only other question I have, you know, there's of course thousands of counties across the country. Are, are counties particularly concerned about this issue? I mean, it sounds like the threat side of it hasn't been particularly present at the county level.
No, but it's something we all need to be, uh, concerned about. The, uh,
Yeah.
uh, conference call that I mentioned was sent to us from the Sheriff's Association to all ninety-two, uh, sheriffs with the, within the state of Indiana. So I would assume most of us will be on that call tomorrow. Uh, but there's always that concern. All of these public buildings, we, as you can imagine, we have, uh, unruly people, people that sometimes don't cooperate on a day to day basis. Uh, but because of what's occurred here nationally, it's certainly, um, uh, cause for more concern without a doubt.
Any other questions for Sheriff Redmond? Sheriff, thank you very much. Um, like I said, I, I was made aware of the concerns from, uh, Councilman Katanzarite and I really appreciate you giving us this update and, uh, keeping us updated as we move forward in this situation. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, President Morton.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Next, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Morton?
Yes, sir.
Just maybe you guys are aware of this under new business. I just thought I'd throw this out here. I, I got word today um, that I believe this week, if not already or soon this week, at the state legislature, um, they are looking to do an increase of the innkeeper's tax in St. Joseph County. Are you guys aware of that? Had you heard about that? No? It's unofficial. It hasn't happened yet, but I believe, um, Senator Ryan Mishler and Senator Davis Gottscheer are looking to shepherd, uh, an increase to allow the county to make an increase in the innkeeper's tax if we'd like to. It's currently at six percent. Other counties like us, like Vanderburg County, I believe, and Allen County have an eight percent innkeeper's tax, which is virtually a tax. For people that are visiting here, it's not usually going to impact people locally, but, um, just, just an FYI, I believe that bill's going to be in the hopper. It isn't already. And that'll be something we'll probably want to follow during this legislative session. And it has a lot of support, I believe, from Mayor Mueller, Mayor Wood and, uh, part of the county commissioners. Hopefully most of us legislative bodies would agree that that might be something to consider, um, going forward. And then, and, and specific money, and it's not just a flat increase in the innkeeper's tax. I think attached to that increase in the tax would be very specific areas that money could be spent or uh, dedicated to, such as the projects we talked about in the past, the athletic facility, sports complex. I think part of the money, it might even be earmarked for the Morse Performing Arts Center. So just keep an eye on that legislation and um, it might be something you'd be interested in, uh, following along.
Thank you very much for that insight. Anything else?
Mr. Martin, was it, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
What, uh, the, uh, committee meeting date on the agenda, is that wrong? January twenty-third, I believe I saw.
Um, under, I'm sorry, under, well, under under caucus notes, under caucus notes, I, I have January twenty-sixth, but I'm just going by the caucus notes.
Okay.
It should, yeah, it should be the twenty-sixth, but it, it is the twenty-sixth at five thirty.
Yeah, twenty-sixth. That's what I thought, but on the agenda, I printed the last agenda. It's the twenty-third, but okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.